That's enough. You're live.
Okay, five o'clock, we call this meeting in a little bit, school board order. We've had two requests to shift the agenda. One, from Heidi Hurst, to move public input up to accommodate for folks who are hoping to attend the playoff game at six o'clock. And the other to move up the Center for School Climate and Learning presentation, so as not to also hold our other guests hostage. So without, as long as there's no objection from the board, I would like to begin first with public input. Then we'll move to the Center for School Climate and Learning, and then we'll follow the remainder of the agenda in order. Is that good? Okay, we'll begin with public input.
That would be me.
That would be you.
Thank you for accommodating.
Anytime.
Hold on, let me just shut my mouth. Quick question.
Do you mind standing just because the?
Oh, I guess.
And identifying yourself, please, thank you.
You're welcome. About the residency program, would you be able to tell me again on the leases, whose name is on the leases?
Each of the residents.
Okay, so when do the leases expire?
The June 30th.
June 30th?
No, the, the, it goes through, I'm trying to think, when did it, I think it was August 1st to August 1st.
Okay, so if a resident accepts a full-time position in the district, what happens to them?
They need to vacate the, their apartments by the 30th of June unless they're working for us in summer school.
Okay.
And we're going to allow them to remain during July.
Okay, so let's go back. Who, whose name is on the lease?
The resident's name.
Okay, so how is the district going to kick these heads out?
Well, we've already signed an agreement on what their, the expectations are around housing, so.
So that's in their lease?
They understand that.
It's in their lease or a contract with them?
It's, it's a combination of the lease and in their agreement with us, so.
Okay, so I thought a couple meetings ago, they didn't have a contract with the district.
They, they didn't have it?
Contract with the district.
Is. Well, with, with our own expectations.
So I'm asking you, how are you going to get a tenant out of an apartment that has the tenant's name on the lease?
Well, I, what, why don't I do this?
No, I'd like you to answer me right now. No, I'd like an answer right now.
Is, is, I don't have the lease in front of me, I haven't looked at it for almost 10 months.
But the lease is in the tenant's name with the facility, correct?
But it's the district that's paying for it.
It doesn't matter, it's in the tenant's name.
Your concern is what?
How are you going to get these tenants out?
Okay, that's a good question, thank you.
So, wait a second, you're the highest paid individual in this district, and you have no idea?
No, that's not true. We worked, we worked with our district lawyer that did multiple renditions of the lease. And he and his, and the law firm is comfortable with the lease that we involved in.
You're not involved in a lease?
The, the lease, well, we are because we're paying for it.
No, you're not. It is in the tenant's name, you said, the resident's name, correct? And when we met months ago, I said, if there's damages in the apartment, who's responsible? Who is?
They have, they have, they have to put the security deposit down.
Correct.
So, so, just like any other lease, if, if you have damage to your apartment, you will lose up to the entire part of your, your deposit.
I'm asking the board to look into this situation.
Is this a hypothetical question or actual question?
No, it's not. I'm asking you to look at the leases and how you're going to get them.
No, I'm asking the question about a resident. Is there, is there, is there some situation we're not aware of where there's a resident that needs to be evicted?
I have no idea, but you may want to look into it, that has to vacate prior to her lease or his lease expiring.
But you're asking the question just in terms of how the agreements are structured, not because there's a situation in which.
Correct.
The, the district.
Because he cannot answer it, so I would highly suggest that the board look into it.
Noted.
Thank you. It's not funny.
Anything else for public input? Okay, we will then move on to the other shifted portion of the agenda. Very happy to welcome a presentation from the Center for School Climate and Learning. And by looks of it, there'll be some co-presenting from folks here at the middle high school. So please, whoever's set to begin, please do so.
So, should we stand?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Let's introduce ourselves real quick. So, Bill Preble, professor of education in New England College, executive director of the Center for School Climate and Learning. Last time I saw you folks, some of you, was about a year and a half ago, when we came to talk about this work that we're doing and asked for permission to do our survey to better understand school culture and climate, as a way to try to do school improvement with students and adults working as partners. And so, we got started, and you know what's happened the last year and a half, things got crazy and COVID and all kinds of things. We finally are here to report the results of that work to you, and we wanted you to share, at least in the, in the information that we've collected. And we want to talk about what the student and adult leadership team that we formed at that point to collect this data has come up with for leadership goals to improve climate and culture for the rest of this year. So we've met today, we, we had them review these data, they said, there's good news in this data, and there's news it's not so great in this data. And they came up with things that they themselves, as students and adults working as their partners, want to work on for the rest of the year. Even want to tell you what that is, because they may ask for your help. And so it'd be nice if you knew what their priorities were. So could you guys introduce yourselves?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'm Danielle Thomas. I'm the high school counselor. I'm very fortunate to be the work of students to do this work, so I'm excited to present to you tonight.
I'm Amber, and I'm a senior here of our climate culture.
All right, so we're going to do a very fast version of what we did in two hours with the students today, so you've got to feel for it. So if you wouldn't mind getting the packets to everybody, there's a ton of data here, and so obviously we can't talk about all of it, but we wanted you to have a copy. And then we're going to just kind of work you through this process to show how the students came up with their leadership goals. So, what else to start with is how to read the data. I love that we do this, this is literally what we talked to the teachers today, and they said, how many of you teachers have done a master's degree? Some of them have. They said, what do you do for the last course of your master's degree? Action research. This is action research. Your middle school and high school kids are engaged in graduate school work. And so they were able to go through data, they collected, they helped collect this data, they analyzed this data. Today they came up with priorities, and now they're going to take action based on the data. So I love that. That's, you know, pretty rigorous stuff. But you have to know how to read it first. And so we literally have elementary kids who do this too, so we've figured out how to share data with them. This is the Preble statistical model. Ready? Big numbers are good, small numbers are bad, percent be positive. I feel safe in this school, what's the right answer? A hundred percent. We try to color code the data. Green is, there's two colors of green, dark green is eighty percent or more. If eighty percent of this community could agree on anything, it would probably be a miracle. We're shooting for eighty percent of the school to agree that there's positive things happening around climate and culture. That's our goal. Our starting line is what you see. So green is good, light green is seventy percent to eighty percent. So we don't want to just work on the hardest stuff, we want to sometimes work on the low-hanging fruit. And so sometimes students will pick goals that's light green with the goal of getting it up from, you know, seventy to eighty or something like that. Red, less than half of the people had a positive response to that question, less than half, less than fifty percent. So red is not so hot. Yellow is between the red and the green. So, last thing you got to know, first page of every one of your, why don't you look up here real quick so you know exactly what the. So the first step is a comparison between what teachers and students had to say. You know, we're, we're a little bummed out, we didn't get bigger numbers, but we know it's hard to get people to do surveys these days. We were happy that we got more than our twenty team members. There are about twenty people who have real strong opinions about these issues around the table, but we don't want to just go with what those twenty people think. We actually said, it'd be better to look at what a hundred and eighty students think, what fifty staff think, and only fifty-two parents, but it's still nice to know what parents had to say. So we want to compare these three groups. We're happy to deal with grade level, but there is some interesting dynamics of your grade level data that we'll talk about later. Could you flip to the next page? So that's, the big thing we want to look at is teacher, student, and parent comparison. The next one is just the student data, but now we're looking at this reality. Is there any, is there any such thing as a safe school? Or, does it depend on who you are in that school? Can the safe school be wonderfully safe and also really threatening, depending upon who you are? We know that there's real differences in what students experience in school, so we can't just talk about students like they're one thing. So second page, we're looking at male, female differences. Are there differences? Do boys feel safer than girls? Do girls feel more stressed than boys? Do girls connect with their teachers more than boys do? And so we're just looking at gender. Are there any significant differences in gender? We're looking at diverse and white students, and this is, this is a challenge, because I think the assumption is that everybody experiences school the same way. But when we talk to the members of this team, who are a very diverse cross-section of your student team, they tell us that depending upon who you are, this school is kind of different. So we want to know, what, what do different groups have to say? This is kind of like New England's issue of diversity. We don't have a lot of racial, ethnic diversity in New England. But most people who work in public schools realize that sometimes there's a real gap between the college-bound kids and how they're experiencing education in schools, and the kids now, I love what your kids said today about Littleton. They said, yeah, but we have this killer vocational program. So other schools may not have that, but we take care of both the college-bound and the non-college-bound kids here maybe better than almost anybody. So I love that. So we can actually see if kids who have other plans are significantly different than college-bound kids. And lastly, special education status. Yes is, I have a 504 plan or special education plan, no is, I don't. Makes sense? I love, like, we go to Southern Connecticut, these elite communities or outside of New York City, like, everybody's living in mansions and stuff. If you look at the special ed data in those school districts, it's really interesting. All the kids who say yes, they're almost all in the green. Because when their parents go to the special ed meeting, they bring a lawyer, they bring, you know, they bring two or three advocates, and they make sure their kids have the best services you could ever imagine, and they have the budgets to pay for them in those communities. Those special, those kids with special ed plans in some of these elite schools are getting like individual personalized education, because their parents are defending it. But in some rural communities, some other kinds of communities, kids with special needs are seen as stupid, they're derived by their peers, they feel less than others, and so we see real differences in how they feel about their school. That makes sense that we divide up by those different groups? So you look on page one, we're just going to be looking at differences between adults and students. And if you want to look at page two, you can look at these differences. I'm not going to give you enough time to really, really seriously, but this is the process we did today. Matthew?
Yes.
Would you just look at factor one, which is school safety?
Okay.
Page one and two. I want good news, what color is good news?
Green.
And I want some things that you need to work on that are the yellow or red. So real quick, find me some good news and find me one or two things to work on. And Erica, would you look at domain two? Domain two is student discipline, and not just the discipline part, but also the support part, right? So discipline and student support, questions about those? So I would start by looking at that first page where it says, all students, staff, you got domain two. Yep. And great, how about domain three? I think it's relationships, if I'm not mistaken. So again, good news about the teacher, student, 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 parent, parent, school, relationship. Dr. Travis Howard, how about you look at teaching and learning? Teaching and learning, if you don't think you're on it, good for you. Find me some good news and find me a couple things that maybe you'd work on. Do you have this? Will you play along with us?
Sure.
Why don't you go to domain five?
Okay.
Domain five is engagement. Am I bored to death all day in this place, or am I engaged in learning in this place? And Bill, if you would look at voice, this is mostly student voice questions. The extent to which students feel like they have some stake or say in their education, or is it all just blasted at them every day? And there's some teacher voice questions in there as well. All right, take three minutes, find some good news and some not so great news.
So would you like to work on staff questions?
Oh, yeah, sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, why don't you, you work, you're going to work, remember climate and culture? This is our little theory, ready? Culture eats strategy for breakfast. Think of the Boston Celtics. When you join the Boston Celtics, you join a culture. You've got a culture winning, right? You don't behave like any ball player, you behave the way that culture tells you, behave or you're gone, right? So the culture really trumps everything. We know the culture creates the climate, and either the culture creates the place that feels great. We're asking you to look at the culture question, the adult question, or you notice yours are, this one teacher, this one student, one of the teachers.
Okay.
So find me some good news about this, and one more page over. This is job, staff, just staff. It's good news and something to work on.
Okay.
So, audience, we will start, when they start telling us what they see, we'll look at it, and you can all see what everybody has to say.
Do you have any questions?
Let's do this first, and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, okay? Everybody find at least one piece of good news? Greg, did you have?
I had domain three, relationships.
Dr. Howard, you had teaching and learning, and you had engagement, correct? Could you just hold up for the audience your first page? Green is good, red is not so good. What colors do you see for teaching and learning at this school as received by students, parents, and teachers? And engagement, those were your most positive domains out of all six. Hey, is that a pretty good deal for a school? Like, what's their job, teaching and learning and getting kids engaged? If you got to be strong on some, not bad, right? So let's start with you, Dr. Howard. What's a piece of good news around teaching and learning? Can we put it on teaching and learning, domain four?
I moved out, I'm back here for it.
So efficient, yeah.
I'm so glad you're running the show, Beth.
There we go. So we go down the third, fourth, and fifth columns, not the top two, the good news is that I have eighty-five and ninety percent, seventy-nine and ninety-two percent, eighty-one and ninety-two percent for the, I have opportunities to use a variety of online learning tools and resources to help me when I get stuck while learning something new. My teachers try to help me by using different teaching strategies, and when I get stuck while learning something new, my teachers try to help me by giving me a little extra time to complete my work. I think those are all really good, high numbers for both students and staff.
And I really like the fact that there's a correlation between what the teachers say they're doing, like, this is what I think I'm doing, and the kids agree.
Because if you go to the top two sections, there's not that correlation.
There you go. You think that sometimes we adults think, oh, I'm doing great at this, and our kids go, oh, yeah, right there. And so I think student and teacher perceptions being different is not unusual, but when it comes to making change, my worry is if teachers feel like they've got it all figured out, they're less motivated to like look in the mirror. So this kind of stops that level of comfort when you go, oh, I've got this down, and all of a sudden it's like, so show me, tell me about some of the areas of need.
Well, I thought that was interesting, that thirty-five percent of the students and eighty percent of the teachers thought the things I'm learning in school help me reach my future career and or college goals. And the second column down, forty percent of the students and ninety-four percent of the teachers said that my teachers seem interested in learning about me and to ask about my personal talent, strength, interest in my career and life goals.
So these are perceptions. So teachers may feel, yes, I spent all day on this. I think the kids are saying, I still don't get it.
So we, you have a baseline for this, though? Like, do you know what the, what's the number you typically see for students in terms of their, their perception of the relative value of what they're learning?
Every school is different. School climate happens one school at a time. We do inner-city schools in the middle of LA, we do schools up in Littleton, New Hampshire. They're kind of apples and oranges. I don't like to do the average, I like to say, what are you, what would you be satisfied with for that answer? That's our target. If you say, let's get this up to sixty percent by next year, I think that's a reasonable goal. How do we go from thirty-five to sixty on that issue? We better make plans. So to me, we think about it takes a couple years to really get these things to where we want. Our goal is to get these to, as many as we can, to eighty percent positive within two years. That's the goal. So I, I know you want me to tell you what the average is. These data, by the way, are pretty darn good. I'll just give you that sense. From a lot of schools we look at, and I'm going to point out a couple areas that are very good for your district, that are some of the most important factors that contribute to improvement, and that's really strong. And that's your list down there, Patricia. Some of the things you've got there are, to me, the fulcrum points to moving the whole ball wax. And some of your, you have a really strong starting point with some of those. So thank you very much, doctor. Let's do engagement. Anything you see as a, a good news in engagement?
My number five?
Yes.
I think like, some of the top ones for teachers and students is that they have chances to work properly with, with, talk with, and learn from other students, not just the teacher. And my teachers help me connect things we are learning in school to current events or issues happening in the real world.
So there's some really positive data here on engagement, some of the strongest I've seen in the state of New Hampshire, to tell you the truth, the baseline is there is. So teachers are doing something that kids are identifying as engaging to them. Now, probably doesn't mean they do it a hundred percent of times, I'm sure no teachers have games every single day, but they're saying there are things that teachers are doing that they appreciate that help them be engaged. This is stuff we can build on. One of the strategies for leadership we're going to use is not to hammer people with the bad news, but it's to find these pieces of strength, and then figure, how do we leverage some of these strengths? We call them bright spots. How do we leverage bright spots to sort of work on some of the other things that aren't so good? And it's a lot better to come and go, hey, you did this amazing thing, you teachers do this amazing thing, but look at this data. How can we do more of that to move that up? And teachers are more receptive to that. We can't force them to do anything. But we can motivate them by showing them that the things they think they're doing may not be what the kids perceive that they're doing. Yes. Did you have a question? Okay, thank you for engagement. Let's go now back to domain one, safety. I think we all know, we're struggling, we're struggling with safety.
So I think one of the lowlights.
Let's do, let's do positive.
Okay, one of the highlights is that there is broad agreement, aside from the juniors, that school, I'm sorry, that teachers and staff take school safety seriously.
It's on people's minds. We hear these students talking about issues of safety, and that it's on their minds. So this idea that you at least feel the students are taking it seriously around you has got to be somewhat comforting, I would hope, and then some areas you can improve.
Yeah, I saw the parents are under the impression that students take school safety seriously, but the teachers and the students themselves are not.
The, the ways that students behave around issues of safety seem troubling. So how do we work on that? And that's what this team is going to be charged to figure out. What can we do to get kids to take this a little more seriously? Could you tell them what we did before we even showed you this data today, or it's just something that I would encourage you to consider doing, to get at this issue?
Yeah, so the way that we started out this work this morning, Bill brought us the YRBS data from the CDC, the national statistics around suicide, feeling hopelessness, and we've used this information to compare before we started all of this as far as our school. So we did this in the purpose of looking at a broader image of how students go across the nation, and talked about how we need to take that seriously, because that is an indication of how students are feeling here at local high school and at high school as well.
And again, it's been so, we've been stopping and starting because of all the things that have happened in the district since we started. I feel like we haven't had the, quite the momentum we wanted in this work. Before I showed your students this data, I needed to have them just reminded of why we're here. And when you look at that youth risk behavior, if you haven't seen that report that came out last week, there's some troubling trends in that data. And I just wanted to put that out in front of the students and have them talk about it and say, what does, what does this information have to do with what we're going to do now? That's this national information, let's look at Littleton.
Okay, look, can you share that with the board at some point?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a link to the, there's great graphics, and it's, it's pretty disturbing. All right, so, safety, we can always, it's, the world is getting more and more challenging about safety, how do we re-up our focus on that? Thanks. Next one, Erica. So you had discipline and student support. Any good news?
Across the board, green. I have problems with other students or adults at the school. There are teachers or staff members I can go to while helping solve those problems.
And we know that there are like programs out there, you know, that are just about connecting every student to one adult. I mean, they're, they're like national programs about that. You guys have achieved that. Now the question is, you know, what else do we have to do? But you've got that as a baseline, I think that's really strong. What are some areas of need there?
The three all pink sections about discipline being at school is fair to all students, that they believe the discipline system at the school effectively addresses the problems of student misbehavior. And then the top one, our school's discipline system focuses on promoting positive student behavior and helping repair harm done for others.
So, discipline is always an issue, and part of the problem is you have two completely different camps, just like many things in this country right now. Some people think the best way to do, to improve the discipline system is just to hammer the little devil harder. We have two legions, we don't nail them enough. That's one camp. The other camp is, when we try to get kids to behave, and our only response to their misbehavior, and it's not our only, but one of our main responses, is retribution. That's what we're modeling. You mess with me, I mess with you harder. That's our traditional approach to discipline. There's a whole other camp called restorative practices that has been around for a long time, the criminal justice system has been using, it's very successful with some of the most hardened criminals. How do you not just punish these people? How do you change their minds so that they stop being a threat to society? And your students are going to be invited to come to a conference at New England College. They'll actually be presenting these goals to other schools, eight other schools that are doing the work. And one of the teams is from Exeter. They've got five years invested in this discipline goal, and they're going to show your team what they've done with alternative approaches to discipline that they're feeling really excited about. They're going to talk about how they began it at the elementary level, not at the high school level, and they started raising students up in their system that were used to a different form of discipline system. And now they're moving into the middle school, but that's five years of investment in restorative practices. So these are not simple, but there's things that we can do, and we can show your students how other schools have dealt with that, and hopefully they get some projects and activities out of these other schools, and they steal their work and take them back here.
We know that so many ideas are being generated today. Even prior to getting this data, our students have been passionate about figuring out ways that they want to direct this, and. Yeah, so we're not at square zero with this data. There's already a lot of passion devoted there, and some great ideas we're looking forward to implementing.
And we've been talking about these issues really since we started and trying to frame projects and activities, this is just really going to focus our work. All right, we left off then with discipline. Let's do relationships. Great?
So the positive thing that I saw in the first, the first row, I have at least one adult at my school who I trust and who I, who really cares about me and my education, primarily all are green. The two yellows I suspect is the transition from middle school to high school, as they have a new group of staff to get to know. The other thing I picked up on is if you look in column under the twelfth grade, the first three are all green. You can see that by the time they reach senior year, they've developed those relationships, you know, and they're very strong. To me, the, the most troubling or the most concerned is the, the fourth row, which is students at the school treat all students with respect regardless of their identities and other differences, for example, gender, racial, cultural identities, physical abilities, and or differences, learning differences. A lot of work to be done there that I can see. A lot of work to be done there that I can see. So, and the, and the only thing I thought that was unique is if you go down to two more rows down, um, there's one single green in that line where teacher and staff are at eighty-four percent. The rest is almost all four, almost all pink. Um, I'm treated with respect by other students.
And the teacher's question was, I am treated with respect by other staff.
Okay, and that's why I wasn't sure where that came in. So that makes sense now that it's. Because I was worried that it was a real, a real breakdown in perception is what I thought. Maybe it was. But now it makes sense there.
Um, excellent. Thank you. Is that it? We get to follow them? Voice.
Voice, yeah. Well, I, I think real highlight is the, the first, uh, statement, my teachers ask about my ideas and opinions and respect my point of view. Across the board, um, the lowest was sixty-five, um, in the eleventh grade. If you, if you look, uh, across the board there, that's a pretty strong showing that, um, students feel that teachers really respect their point of view. It's virus, you know, challenges. And, and I, I would also say, if you look at all of the statements, everything's north of sixty percent. So, so that, you know, that, that's a positive.
Yes.
Um, you know, one of the things that stands out is, is how the parents feel. That, you know, that their voice is being heard, you know, at thirty-one percent or, or twenty-three percent. You know, that, that certainly, um, reflects a challenge. In the lowest of, um, all of the areas for students is, I'm invited to offer ideas and suggestions to teachers and school leaders for improving our school. So kind of a broader question outside of the classroom. And that was the, the lowest area. So that would be an area of focus.
And your whole leadership team is actually working to do this. So the fact that you started this group that is here to share what they are going to work on with you, what you said today to the team, you know, I'm behind this work. If you need support, I'm there. Al said the same thing. When you have formal leadership, willing to support, to do voice and work as partners, that's a different culture. Then sit down and be quiet, do what we say. We're the grownups. And so I think you're already well along the way and you're right. There's already not much red here. Your, in, the instincts are good. Very nice. And then this is the culture piece, right? And so this was mostly the student, uh, excuse me, the, uh, parent data and the teacher data. So this is like, how do the grownups play together or work together, learn together in the sandbox? And that's really the adult culture in the system. We know that you have one piece of data there that's absolutely fabulous. Um, let's start with what you, what, did you pick it up?
I mean, it was obvious, um, that the staff acknowledged that they developed a clear vision and mission statement. And it was.
We know where we're going.
They know where they're going. But the parents don't.
Yep.
So, and then when you look down and saw their reaction to regularly published newsletters and stuff, that maybe it's just the delivery of that vision. They just don't know what it is.
And I think the school feels like they're trying their best to communicate great. But just like when the teachers say, oh, I do that. And the kids go, well, you know, not so much. Maybe that's the same thing. The school feels like, yeah, we're doing that, but maybe it's not being received by the parents. So.
Right.
We just have to redouble our efforts.
Right.
What's another positive there on that second page?
Yeah, um, so the other, the other part of it was this, the school culture altogether with the feedback. The feedback, um, from colleagues, from students, um, and the opportunities that are, that are given all around.
There's already a culture receiving feedback from, teachers receiving feedback from students from each other. This is just more feedback to build into that. It's just more stuff to think about. All right. So, that was a quick run through, uh, twenty-five pages of data. Thank you. You can take that home and, uh, can't sleep tonight, just start reading it. It goes off pretty easily. Um, but we want to now hear about what you guys came up with today. Can you do the same thing as you? Can you talk a little bit about the process that you used and what you came up with?
So Amber. Uh, so we did the same, same thing that you all just did, um, with a lot more time, um, and a lot more, I don't know, time if you will. Totally good to say. So, we did the same sort of deal. We broke up into groups. Um, there were approximately like four or five people each group. Um, and then we had to remake a poster about the pieces on here that they felt were the ones that were more important and they wanted to work it. Uh, and so, uh, which group were you part of? Yes. We were in the boys group. Um, do you want to kind of go over what we did?
Um, we basically, well, we ran down what was most concerning to us. At the bottom, so we did how twenty-eight percent of staff agree that they are in survival mode and that they are considering their, their, that's concerning. Um, and then up top, we, for the students, we divided it into, um, fivers and white for how, um, they feel that like when they say their suggestions or their ideas, how the teachers and school leaders are capable of that information.
So out of those six different domains, which three did you, so we gave everybody three sticky dots. They all presented their posters, just like you all presented. And then they all got to wander around and look at all the things that people said, we need to work on these things. And each student put a dot on something that they wanted to work on as a member of the team. They couldn't set goals for Al. They couldn't set goals for the board. They couldn't set goals for super ten. They said, this is what our team is going to work on. What were our, we had actually almost like three and a half.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell me what, what one was? Yeah, we had relationships. Um, we also have this one, which was sixteen, which is school discipline and student support.
So school discipline and student support was the number one issue.
Yeah. Uh, and you can see that people were kind of cutting by the ones that they felt were more important than others. Um, so this one was either the discipline, the discipline system at the school is fair to all students. So a lot of people were sticking on that one being number one, um, followed by relationships. Um, mostly students treat students with respect at this school. Um, twenty-one, or percent of students said, uh, they agree with that, whereas eighteen percent of teachers did. And twenty percent of parents and guardians said the same thing. Uh, and then the last one that we have was kind of one and a half, um, was the safety measures. Um, so students take school safety seriously, um, and I feel safe at this school. Um, followed by the voice, which do you want to talk about, why that was kind of also a good one?
Um, while it kind of leaded into the relationships and while we are all of them, they kind of intertwine. But, um, the voices of the students is something that really needs to be worked on.
We felt like if the student voice was being appreciated, people felt like they could share how they felt about things, the rest of this would be changed as well. So it is a huge correlation between all of them.
Yeah, so, thank you. So we just said, voice was the fourth vote getter. But we thought, maybe that's a strategy for working on the other three. How do we just employ strategies that rely on seeking value in students' perspectives as we do the work on discipline, on relationships, um, and on, what was the other one?
Um, uh, voice, safety measures.
Oh, thank you, thank you. All right. So, anything else?
It's a great name. We're happy to do it. We look forward to continuing this part.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all we got. Questions?
Yeah, so, I don't know if this is really for Bill or for Michaela, for Al, or what, but what's the process like now for, as this, as this program continues, reporting back to the full faculty and to the parent community about what the results are and then what the plans and the process look like on a going forward basis?
So, since today was the first day they saw the data, they wanted to report back what they're going to focus on. So that was the beginning of the student team. Um, we talked a little bit about what we were going to do with the faculty. And we wanted to do a process with faculty that reflects the beliefs that you just heard. Want to tell a little bit about that, please? Remember?
So we did the same sort of deal that we just did with all of you and had the opportunity for them to go through the data. Um, because we want to feel connected to these pieces by actually going through and spending the time thinking about it, putting ourselves in student perspective, um, or the parents and guardians, et cetera. Um, so we'll in fact hope to do the same sort of thing that we did today with students and then with all of you. Um, and then in combination with this, we also have an idea of making sure that, because some of the, some of the data, and I think Matt, you pointed this out too, was contradicting of each other. So, um, wanting to actually target that, especially around the relationship piece, that students feel that they have someone they can go and talk to. And even besides that, making sure that, um, they actually will go and talk to them because there was some differences there. Um, something we'd like to do is figure out a way that we, using post-it notes, have, um, teachers and staff go around and put a post-it note next to a name of a student they really feel they have a positive relationship with. And we think that will quickly identify those students who do not have that and have some work for the intervention support to their students as well.
So this, this group has been together for a while and they named themselves Transformers. Comprised of students and teachers. And adults were there today also to go through this process. We're going to go through a similar process with all the adults. And then figure the way, how to be transparent with, with the community. And then, as we work on these goals, we'll probably form some other smaller committees and engage more students and those activities to improve, to, to, there's a, that we can improve on.
This, it, it's reflected in the survey. There's, we know that there's a perception that the high school in particular are under communication with parents. And as you know, we're, we are accused of, of not being transparent and all this stuff. And I, I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't let it go too long before we start communicating proactively about what's happening. Even though this process is nowhere near done, right? I think we should be, we should, just my perspective, we should be, you know, continuously engaging the parent community in particular and saying, here, here are the facts of the situation. Here's the process that we're now undertaking. Uh, so that people understand and have access to, you know, the, the results of this work. Because I think it is important and it is illuminating and that it gives more people trust in the process as it plays out as well.
Targeting, um, target the parent guardian piece as well. Um, Greg has been, um, very helpful in this work too. Um, we started a school counseling advisory council earlier this year, Caitlin, Jovara, myself. Um, and it's kind of shifted focus a little bit from school counseling in particular into overall school, um, ideas and making sure that we are giving them the information that they feel they can give some information back to and have that reciprocal relationship. Um, we did have one of those meetings back in November. We're having another meeting later on this week. Um, and so we chose some people, um, some parents who are pretty active in the community of those who really aren't as much. Um, and with students, staff, um, and parents coming together. And we, we will be discussing something similar to this as well as data being collected within our school counseling programs.
So the students did the process today. In ninety minutes, they came up with thorough analysis and their goal. I'm hoping Al will invite the team to do the same process. The students will lead the process that they went through with the faculty. The rule is, you can only set goals for yourself. You can't set goals for other people. So you can see teachers then going through saying, we want to work on these three things. We think these things are the most important part for teachers. That intrinsic motivation of hitting your own goals is critical, I think. It's voice. Now we come to parents. If you can only set goals for yourselves, how do you present this data to parents in a way that helps them take responsibility for their roles? Not that they have, we have ten more things they're demanding that the school do, but they say, how can I support the, the school in doing the things that I care about? That's the way we have to approach the parents in my point of view. Because just more people telling everybody else what to do does not change school. It does not change education. It just causes tension. You know, who are you to tell me how I do my job? Sorry. If I told you guys how to do your job, you wouldn't like it. So, having that conversation with parents is a really important thing to start to build, I think, respect between parents, teachers, students, and honoring the voices of everybody, but empowering everybody to step up and try. What was the last thing we did in our meeting today? We asked everybody to.
To look at someone and give them a compliment that wasn't enough to.
So, I said, okay, we don't have a plan yet, but we know that relationships starts with somebody, you know, being nice to you. So practice one person a day, going, not something that is about your physical appearance. One compliment.
We were partners. We had fun.
And it was like they had a blast complimenting each other. Like, that's the kind of action projects we want. And when they come to our conference, they're going to see those kinds, we call them sweet spot action projects. We want lots of those kind of things happening and we can invite parents to participate in some of those. So, it's, it's a really good point, but how we do the work really matters, I think. And this notion of everybody takes responsibility to do what they can to contribute is, it feels like only fair.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting process. I'm saying, let's just make sure we prioritize socializing this beyond student body.
Yes, absolutely.
That's important. And then I have one last question, then I'll be quiet. If that's okay. Um, so obviously, Al, this transformer group will provide critical input to you all as you think about, obviously, your, 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 uh, ownership or domain over all of these domains, right? But I'm curious in particular as to, from your perspective, Vanessa's, from Michaela's, what do you make of the, the area on discipline? And then what is your read on the situation, uh, presently in, in the middle high school?
Do you mind if I show the student perspective? Do you mind if I show the student perspective? I think, I think the only piece I want to add on there, it's more about, um, fairness between, um, groups of students mostly. And that's the feedback that I've heard from, from the students. But, I don't, I don't even know if it's a, if it's a recent issue.
But it's perception.
Yeah.
Of unfairness. Doesn't mean there's unfair practices going on. There's a perception that one group gets treated, one group gets away and stuff. That's everything. That we always think there's favorites and somebody else gets treated better than I do. And, and part of that really is how we can't communicate. The, the system does not allow you to communicate consequences to the public, right? You can't go tell what you did to Johnny when he, when he did that. It's part of the system. So that's why we need to rethink our whole system. Maybe Johnny should step up and own his stuff and tell everybody what happened to him and what he's doing about it. That would be a different approach than us keeping a secret that we suspended him for a hundred years.
You know, the discipline system, the discipline code that we're all familiar with, doesn't work well in today's society, uh, for a lot of reasons. Years ago, we just spent quite a bit of time on, uh, restorative practices. I think we really need to revisit that. You know, and it's, again, those perceptions, you know, sometimes fair is unequal. And sometimes that's a perception. But it, it is something that is, is quite challenging. You know, and, uh, years ago, when you would think of the most severe action a school would take would be a suspension, house school suspension. That's probably the least impactful today. So, so we need to take a look. And that's, and that's, that is certainly a goal that, I, I see administration wrapping their heads around that in more detail and getting some more feedback from schools that are successful and, and current trends out there that we could adopt.
When you guys come to the conference, there'll be eight other schools. Almost all of them have discipline as their goal. Some of them have been out of it for three years, some have been out of it for two years. My goal is to connect all you eight schools into an alliance, a respectful school alliance, so that you could just follow up extra and go, what was that thing you told us about that thing? The elementary schools are kid rich one that seems to be distorted? Maybe we should start down there and, you know, train kids a completely different way about what discipline is if they come up through the system. That's a five, six, seven year, you know, commitment to the work. But I think there's lots of resources there. We're trying to just pull them together and help people access the expertise that some schools bring to that issue and steal their good ideas.
Vanessa, any reflections or observations on that, from your perspective?
No, I mean, that's, I agree with what Al said, with, um, the times that we started practices and several of us were trained on it, um, and we're going to, um, talk, um, implement in part and all of that.
You good? I'm good? You good? Very good, so much basketball. I, I would only say that we have been, so, I go back to eleven months ago. We had talked about the need to have a focused series of board level discussions on discipline at the middle high school. We didn't do that. I'll take ownership for that. We get this. And I think that, uh, you know, not to step on the toes of what they're doing, but they'll provide great input to that discussion. And I, I, I want to make sure this is made real for everybody. It isn't a purely academic exercise. So I think at some point, we ought to maybe consider having a dedicated session. You know, even if that's going to be in, in, in non-public, so that there's a bit more candor, at least at the outset, to talk about what, what the, what the, the situation is, um, and what we think, how we think we can be shaping board level goals, or how you and Al, Vanessa, Michaela can be shaping your own personal goals. So I, to, to try to look at how we can make some improvements. Uh, to, to try to look at how we can make some improvements there.
Wherever possible, do that work together. They have goals. They're going to be working on that. They're going to be learning. Sit at the table. Clemson University studied our program and what they found was when students and teachers and administrators and parents sit together at the table, this is your culture piece, it brings out the best in the students. Sometimes us grownups get together and we're not super successful working with each other. When you have a group of students here, it kind of keeps your eye on the ball. So I would encourage you to work in partnership on the climate and culture work whenever you can. And I think you will really enjoy the work more and you'll probably get more done. So that's my bias, but it's really the root of our program.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all for being here, especially for you for being the brave one to come and represent.
No one else volunteered.
She was the only one who jumped up and said, I'll do it.
Appreciate it very much. And I, I know, I, I think I speak for the board when I say that you need to be continuously updated on this. I think this is really important. I think this needs to be, and we'll be looking for follow-ups whenever it's prudent to do so about what's happening, that we're running at conferences, what the communication, engagement plan looks like. I think all that's important for us to understand. Whatever support we can provide, or you feel like you're not getting from us a lot of stuff.
Thank you, everybody. I think you would have more students, students.
Yeah, of course, of course. It's an important night as it orders. A lot going on. Very well.
Thank you all so much. Before we wrap up, I just want to publicly thank the group. As everybody else has said, it's, this is foundational work. To, and, and the really powerful, high leverage goals that were identified today. We get this right, the residual impact on everything is substantial. So what I said to them, that, you know, my, the group has my full support. I think that, uh, you know, I'm confident that we're going to make progress. It's almost there. It's a challenge. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Feel free to stay for as long as you like, but feel free to leave as well, uh, if you have greener pastures to travel to. Okay, so we're going to move on then to item number two, consent agenda, which includes four minutes from February thirteenth, which is for motion to approve.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stand motion carries four zero. Okay, we're going to move on to section four, unfinished business. Anything to report on the teacher residency program?
Well, I did call the, uh, the contracts that we, that we had our lawyer, uh, drafted. It's too bad Heidi's not here, but, um, I could share with the board. And it's, it's two different, there's one agreed with us and it's very clear that the district has no responsibility connected with, um, you know, anything negative that happens at, at the, uh, at the park and such. So I think that's, that's helpful. If somebody needs to be evicted, that's really the, um, uh, the landowner. It's not us. Um, they've committed to six units. So we think it's, you know, we think it's just, it's for six, but we're the problem. They still have committed to us for six years. So if they're a problem, we deal with it. It's not ours. And that's why.
I don't think she was talking about eviction.
She was.
She was.
Yeah.
Very clear about basketball.
But the way contracts work, it's their name on the contract. It's their responsibility. Has nothing to do with us. So she's just not one.
And the only point I want to make, and this is in public, so this goes out to anybody watching or listening, is that Dr. Hart has repeatedly asked if you have something to bring up in non-public, in public session that you have questions about, to ask him ahead of time so he can come prepared to ask, to answer the question. Um, it's very unfair or it's unfair to expect that any of us, including Dr. Hart, including Patty, can answer on the fly any question about any piece of business in the district. I have hundreds of contracts that I manage at the hospital. I don't know the language, but I can tell you exactly what the language is if I have time to retrieve that data. The same should be true of, of our superintendent, of our administrators that are asked to answer questions. So I encourage anybody in public that's watching this, if you have questions you want to bring to the school board meeting, reach out to your administrator and give them an opportunity to bring that information to the meeting to answer the question, uh, more thoroughly.
So Phil, if you or Patty or whoever can just give us a breakdown of maybe the attachments to the expedited agreements and then I can, I can send an email to Heidi and let her know. I mean, this is, this is her line of work in a way, right? So assuming she knows some things that I don't and, and, you know, I, I just, I don't understand if it's a purely hypothetical question. There's lots of hypothetical questions we could pursue, like what happens if a teacher kills somebody or develops food poisoning or whatever. But I, 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 you know, so we'll, we'll take a look at the, the contracts and we'll, we'll make a response. Uh, and hopefully that, that settles that. Uh, we'll move on then to the Lakeway Building Committee. Okay, we'll move on to Esser. Any, any new in Esserland?
Rochelle and I have been working together, basically at this point, what we're doing is to take what, uh, all the lines in, um, Esser two and Esser three. We're finding, trying to determine if we're going to have any kind of lead out of some of those pieces that we could reallocate or, or something else. Um, you know, at this point, the people that I've heard back from, um, is not going to be a lot of that, um, uh, type of additional spending, which I guess is good if it reduces things we, we, uh, who are accurate in what we're asking for. Um, and then of course we have the, the big HVAC project that, um, absorbs basically the remainder of Esser. So there may be a little bit of, of reallocation, but I don't see it as significant.
Patty, I'm realizing that I skipped you, so we'll just, we'll, we'll make our way through. We'll make our way through unfinished business.
I mean, it's the same thing with Rick's, but, you know, Esser is live. All the Esser reports are live, underground in the, um, website. And if anyone has any questions or concerns, you know, to reach out and explain it further, we've updated the reports to now have, this is what we wrote it for, this is what has been, um, expended in each month. So then, and remember that those months are a month behind. So what's been expended was expended for January. We have not properly paid for February, so I've not updated February. Um, but it is as live as we can make it and it is as accurate as we can do that. Right now you have roughly sixteen thousand dollars left in Esser three that's not attached to anything right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill or Rochelle? All right, um, we're going to continue to skip Patty one last time. We'll move on to water remediation plan. Don't all talk at once.
I mean, both looking at you, so you're on, I guess.
I think we just, we need a board decision. I think there's three options. We talked about it at the facilities meeting on Friday. We add filtration systems to each of the faucets that tested higher than the, um, allowance. We post the signs as we already have done and leave that as is, or we shut the faucets off completely.
And so is there a presentation breaking down those options?
Well, the last two are free.
Okay.
Is there any negative to shutting off the water? Does it impede anybody's ability to do their work in their classroom?
Nope, you're just going to have a lot of unhappy teachers if they don't have water in their room.
What are they using the water for?
Sorry.
Just, just, then, and, and Greg, my, my perception was at the end of the facilities meeting, there was a facilities committee recommendation, wasn't there?
Um, no.
I don't know that we had the recommendation. I have my own recommendation.
Yeah, we were kind of leaning towards option one.
Yeah.
Just like the filtration system, you're saying.
Just to add to that, just so you know, I was at a basketball tournament at Woodville in their gym. I went down to use the restroom on their faucets. It says not for drinking, but three quarters of the label was worn off. You couldn't even... So my fear is if we go to the signage, over time, the signs disappear, the signs wear away, and we don't keep up with them, we are at risk. In my opinion, and I only speak for myself from the facilities committee, was that it's a three thousand dollar investment to get filtration on all of our faucets and a two thousand annual cost to mean to basically replace every year. That's a five thousand dollars to now, two thousand dollars going forward that we can budget for. That is far less than any lawsuit or any litigation or the cost or negativity that comes with a, with a public, you know, article written about the fact that we are not looking for the best interest of our, of our kids. I think it's a small price to pay. I, I move that we move forward with the filtration system on all the faucets.
And it's the right thing to do.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why we've been talking about it.
To hell with, 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 with the press, right? It's the right thing to do. Okay, so there's a motion. There's a second from Travis. Is there any discussion? Are we clear on the, the wording of the motion?
No.
Okay, so let's be clear on the wording of the motion.
So I move, I move that we, well, the question is, is this an issue here at the high school as well? Do we have faucets here that are all in that same category?
So we have ten faucets that failed the high school.
So I make the motion that we add filtration systems to all faucets that failed the lead testing requirements, uh, within the Littleton School District facility buildings.
Okay, so motion has been made and seconded. It seems like there's no need for further discussion. So all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Standing motion carries four zero.
I would also like to say that Greg mentioned the public and, you know, making us prepared so that we can answer their questions. But I've asked several times that when we are to vote on a motion, that we are also prepared with whatever it is we're voting on. It said water remediation plan. We, there was a motion in the folder tonight and we had like really no information. So if you guys could get us the information ahead of time so it's clear, that'd be great. Again.
I second, I can't second anything, but in spirit, I second Erica's comment. Would have loved to have had a more focused presentation on the options there. Um, as insignificant as the dollar mod is, it's, it's a significant issue that we're concerned about doing the right thing for. All right, so we'll move on then to, we'll move backward as it were, to our business administrator at her report.
I don't really have much. Just the only thing, I feel, I feel like we just met, actually.
We did.
We did. We sure did.
So, um, Greg had the question from last week when I brought up the van. So Jude and I worked backwards from last year and came up with thirty-four trips that the van was used for. So the cost, if we had contracted buried transportation, if they would have been available for all those trips, with a minimum of a two hour wait time, which some of those trips we know would have been more than a two hour wait time, it would have been about thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and that would have been just for that one year. So we know Al feels it. I feel it just by using the van right now. Um, it has definitely ruffled some feathers and we've had to certainly make some adjustments, um, by using the van right now. Um, but we need to, um, use the van right now for the impact and we've actually had to add, adjust for another student right now. So losing that contract bus we had last year has significantly impacted our programs this year. And hiring the independent contractor that we have for the four runs, two in the morning, two in the afternoon, is costing us four hundred dollars just for that. And to hire them to do these other three runs would be an additional three hundred dollars a day. So for us to purchase a van right now, like I said, it would easily pay for itself in less like half the school year. And we have two people right now that are willing to do the runs. So I'm recommending that we purchase a van immediately to save the money, save the taxpayers the money. Because it's going to cost us a lot more to outsource all these runs that we've got to do. And we do ultimately have a plan that next fall, we won't outsource those runs we're doing currently in the morning and the afternoon. And we'll use this van to do basically what we used to do with the bus last year. And this van will run all day. Um, so.
Thank you very much for the data.
Yeah.
I think it's important because the public doesn't see this.
Yeah.
So they just see the van parked in the parking lot. And they may only be driving by at five o'clock at night, but they say parked in the front.
Right.
Um, and I think it's great. It, it's definitely the return on the investments.
Right.
A no brainer. Um, so I thank you for the data. I just wish, I wonder if there's a way that we could somehow publish some of this on our website so that people, just so that people knew that we're, it's not just setting collecting dust, that we're actually using this van. We're, you know, we're using it a lot. We're saving, we're replacing, you know, other transportation by using this. Um, I just think it'd be great to just, we need to promote it more.
Actually, I would, so on that front, I a little bit liked the water remediation discussion. I feel like we need a more focused presentation that can be linked to the agenda, that would lay out this data, the cost, the procurement process, the timeline, and then seek a board vote. I mean, obviously somebody wants to make a motion and second. I can't stop that. But, but, but my thought would be, we've got a meeting in two weeks. Let's ask the administration to be prepared. Let's have it be a dedicated item on the agenda, not just part of the VA report, to come forward with a presentation that says, hey, we want to buy a van. Here's how much it costs. Here's what it looks like. Here's a policy to follow. Here's how we use it now.
Here's how much it's going to save us.
Yeah, and let's be, let's be sort of a bit more.
Well, my report is public.
Understood, but it's, it's everything. It's a, it's a grab bag of issues that you're dealing with.
But essentially a, a business plan is what you're looking for for this van, you know, that goes around.
Where the money's coming from, uh, uh, what's the fund balance, are we leveraging?
An updated quote on the purchase vehicle, so we have a real number with a real.
Right, well, just, okay, so this is my second part. It, I'm going to need a hard yes because I, so I put feelers out today. Um, because I had a feeling when I talked to you guys last Monday that you guys were like, yeah, like literally we're going to save eighty thousand in the first year just by purchasing it. You know, that's what paying fifty thousand for a van. So, um, I've put my feelers out to several North Country dealers. Heard back from one today about eleven o'clock and he told me that he can get his hands on two. They're not at his current dealership, but at other locations. And that he could get one of them there within a few days. By the time I responded to him, one was already sold. Um, so I did tell him, I said, well, I'm going to be talking to my board tonight. I said, if they give me the, yeah, okay, Patty, we need to go in this direction. I said, I'll call you with a deposit tonight. I said, but I'm not going to be able to actually purchase it within, probably within the next two weeks because we're going to have another meeting in two weeks that I'll have to bring the purchase and sale year for them to vote on.
Why don't you have that information tonight? You already spoke about it.
Well, I have it in front of me. I know what the figure is.
Oh, are you going to share with us?
Well, yeah, but I haven't gotten like you guys saying, yeah, Patty, I want you to do it. But until we decide that we're definitely doing it, I'm not cutting them a check tomorrow. I can make a deposit on it and we can close on it in a couple of weeks. I don't think like they want a check tomorrow for it. I can make a deposit on it. But I'm not going to be here to close on it. We're not going to, you know what I'm saying? Like, but it's, I mean, it's all just happened like this afternoon, you know, like I didn't.
You know, I, I, I wonder if we can do not either or, but and. Um, and, and if, if, it's certainly Patty and has gone over this, um, at least a couple, two or three times with me. And I think it's, it's great to include the public, the rest of the board. This, this seems to make financial sense. Um, but I also understand that, that it's been a sticking point for could we move forward, but then have a full, um, uh, you know, PowerPoint presentation of why we made this decision? Would that be helpful?
Phil, I mean, there has to be somebody willing to make a motion and willing to second it, and then there has to be the votes. I wouldn't support it because I think we've been too casual. Um, and I think that we need to just be more black and white about the process. And, and I understand we talked about it briefly last time. There's additional information here. Uh, but I feel like I still don't have the full picture of it. I don't think we presented the full picture of it comprehensively and transparently to the public. And so I wouldn't support that, but I'm one, dude. Everybody wants to make a motion? That's free.
I wouldn't support it this time either. One, one vote. I wouldn't support it this time either, one, one vote for one van, to me, is not enough, we, you know, we've had this happen, I've had this happen elsewhere in my career, and you feel handstrung by one vendor, because you've got to buy it now, or it's going to disappear, let it disappear, there'll be more, there'll be more next week. Might be a little more, might be a little different, might be a different, but I wouldn't, I don't want to feel hostage to the one vendor that's, that answered back. If you had four quotes, and this was the best quote by $10,000, then it might never have been.
I'm in favor of the van, but I'm not going to vote on it tonight, because I don't understand why, we kind of talked about it last week, yeah, we think we need the van, Greg wanted more information, that should have come to us tonight, you have the information on the van that you have, but you don't want to tell us what it is, because you want to write a check tomorrow, it's like, it doesn't make any sense to me. Why, why can't we just have all of the information laid out for us right now, if you want to vote tonight? I just feel like.
Well, I guess I don't know what information you want, I mean.
What's the cost of the van?
Oh, okay, the cost of the van is $53,940.
And where would the money come from?
Well, that's another thing, there's multiple sources, we were going to seek funds from a source, but we haven't done that yet.
We've got a $16,000 down payment, Professor.
No, it could be, it, no, but, I mean, there's, we could get it from year-end funds.
I'm, I'm totally in support of the van, but I also don't think today's the day to do it, let's get it all out there, we have public tasks, that's all listed black and white, and I think everybody here is a day.
Okay.
Then we're supportive of the idea, we're just not in a position where we can be casual about it, and that's, and for a whole host of reasons, some of which I don't want to get into now, I think it's in everybody's interest that we be explicit, we be comprehensive, and we be maximally transparent on this. I think you'll get a four vote in two weeks, that's a prediction, not a, not a binding promise.
Yeah.
But I just think, let's, let's be, let's be comprehensive.
I would like to thank Judy Haslett Public Play for bringing the information together.
All right, anything else, Patty?
No, I think that is it.
We're all good for March, everything squared away, budget valid.
Everything is good, stuff is getting printed.
Except for the very delinquent school board chairman on the annual report.
I was trying to imagine what I'd do for it.
You're lucky it made it, I told, downed it.
She didn't read it.
I'm being too casual, in other words. All right, very well, thank you, Patty.
If I wait for year four, then we won't have a vote.
Noted. All right, any new business items to bring before, for, we'll look to committee reports and personnel? Nothing, right, I think?
Nothing.
Okay. Facilities, anything beyond the water remediation plan?
Not really, we talked about, you know, the, the public's reception of the Lakeway project briefly, but most of the conversation was all the remediation, so, if Dale, does anything bigger to bring forward at this time?
No, we just have the list of end of year, I don't get it, we need to prioritize, but.
Like a new school.
Didn't even make the top step.
All right, policy. Policy, no. All right, we weren't able to have a student representative with us tonight because of conflicts, but it sounds like we will have somebody for our next meeting. Move on then to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have, you know, the last couple meetings I've talked about with site visits, we, we had our site visits, two or three that we will have last Friday, Kelly Nolan and myself, and the entire freshman staff at the academy attended, we went to Rochester Academy, and the day was also really some innovative things, and I think we, we haven't done a full deep breath yet, but I think there's some pearls of what they've done, and part of that conversation, and we, you know, we, I think we've connected it, you know, kind of a thought partner there. The second is in Dover, in their alternative school, again, a couple different things that they, they did well, their program was a lot like ours, so it wasn't as much there as it was in the program, you did one in the morning, one in the afternoon, so we're getting together, like I said, deep breathing on it, we have, if you remember, we have these five research questions that we've identified, and we're, we're getting closer and closer to starting to be able to write drafts and report, what we need to, please school board later this year, but I, I feel like we're making some good progress. Dr. Cruz is superintendent's board, if there's any questions, go ahead, please.
Go ahead, I just have a question on the site visits, the schools that you've been visiting, not only recently, but in the past, are they all public schools, or are they private schools?
These are both public schools, yeah, I'm trying to think, would be other, yes, I think of all of them.
Just, I'm, I'm just asking because funding sources are different, private funding's not always an issue where public, it's coming out of the taxpayer, so that's good, I'm glad to hear that they're, that they're public schools, that you're complete, thank you.
When do you anticipate the report being complete?
Oh, I, I think we're kind of, we're a little bit of May, it's, well, yeah, we'll get, we'll get into April, and maybe, we might be able to get something before April vacation, but.
I'm just thinking that's going to be tight, with the recommendation is to move them.
Yeah, no, no matter what, it's going to be tight, because it's, it's, if there were major renovations, so, I do think it's, what we end up deciding is probably going to be a longer-term decision than an immediate decision.
Any questions for Bill? All right, and then we're looking for a properly worded motion to enter into non-public.
I'll make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91B, code three of the rank to no law, for number three, matters of which discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board, taking with us the superintendent, that's it, and I don't think there's any other number on the other one.
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, roll bubble, please.
Greg Cook, Travis Howard.
Matt Smith, John, Mo, Jerry, Ford, here we are.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know a long.
Hey Travis, can you check the score while you're up?